Hi everybody, we're ready for round two. I can't thank you all for coming, it means so much. I personally really appreciate that. The candidates again, I mentioned earlier, I think it's a profile and courage that they're even running for office at this time. Let's give them a round of applause. Basically going over the rules one more time, I believe we mentioned some of these before, but we will start with a one-minute opening, we'll start from the left to right. The closing will reverse, go over to go this way to that way. I'm going to try to ask everybody equal amount of questions, the questions will be asked through the cards I have. You have one minute to respond to the questions. If somebody uses your name and calls you out, you have 30 seconds to rebut that question. That's it. So think of that before you do it, because you're giving the other person the last word. Because the question is going to end there. Now, the timekeepers are sitting right here, by the way, everything is being videoed, is being streamed on Facebook live. So we would ask anybody if you're going to leave or after leaving, please go up the stairs quietly so you don't cross in front of the video and the audio. The timekeepers are here, they're using the pattern technique where there are 30 seconds, which is yellow, 15 seconds, which is orange, and then red means stop. I just want to say one thing to all the candidates, being an audience participant for many, many years, if you think that you're going to benefit by trying to get in that last 10 seconds question, you know, before the one minute after one minute's over, please don't do it for your own sake, because what really happens here, the audience looks at it, it sees the disrespect that you don't play by the rules, and sometimes the whole answer you gave is wasted because you tried to squeeze in that extra 10 seconds. We're on a time limit, so let's try to have fun and inform the public. Let's go, y'all ready? Okay, here we go. We will start with opening comments with Mr. Burton.
Hey, good evening, my name is Tyree Burton, and I am associate pastor at Christian Wayne Ministry located at 549 Newtown Road in Virginia Beach. I am also a director of operations for youth mentoring group called Men in Distinction, which is located out of Eddie F. Williams. I am a small business owner, I am a former young and appointed chairman of Virginia Beach. I have a heart for service, I'm running for city council, this is my second attempt to run it. I hope to answer any questions that you guys may have tonight. I am a true conservative and...
Thank you very much. Ms. Henley?
I'm Barbara Henley, and I represent the Prince of San District. I want to tell you what I've been doing for the past two years to establish a partnership with the stakeholders within the Albemarle Watershed. The watershed that receives drainage from 66% of Virginia Beach. This part of the city is quite different from that which drains through the Chesapeake, and my concern is that we do not appreciate those differences. Because the Albemarle Watershed is wind tide driven and has only three small outlets to the Atlantic, the waters in the Salons and Bays present special challenges. I believe that we need to work closely with the stakeholders in this system. Last summer, we tested the waters for a partnership and found a great deal of interest in working together. In April, we hosted a full-day symposium with about 35 presenters with a wide array of issues to be considered. We are continuing the presentations and want to involve as many citizens as possible so that we can all work together to address the issues and arrive at the course of action we want to follow. My hand, I'll give you the times of first presentation is being replayed. I hope you enjoy us.
Ms. Quansey? Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Quansey.
Quansey.
You're not wrong, my students do the same thing. My name is Karen Quansey, I am running for the Prince of San District seat on city council. I'm a teacher, I'm a mother, and I'm a volunteer. I serve on the Transition Area Citizens Advisory Committee, the Vision to Action Community Coalition, and the Planning Commission as a Prince of San District representative. I firmly believe in preserving the past, but I think when we do that, it has to be in order to enhance the present and shape the future. I know how to forge new relationships, and I know how to forge relationships with city officials and community members in order to make the best decisions for all of us. I share the same concerns as most of you, or all of you. Infrastructure, in particular flooding, economic vitality, especially in relation to diversifying our economy, public education and public safety, especially in relation to valuing those people so that we are always paying them what they deserve because they take care of us and they take care of our children. I also believe in making sure that we pay attention to being inclusive and to provide diversity. Thank you. I hope I have your vote in the chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Worst.
Good evening, my name is Tim Worst. I am running for the Prince of San District seat for city council. I am a homegrown Virginia Beach kid, grew up in Kempsville most of my life, and for the last 16 years, I've lived out in Lagamar off of Sandbridge Road. I've spent my college in Newberry in South Carolina, and then I came right back to Virginia Beach. Again, living in Kempsville, and now my wife, who I've been married to for 23 years, and my two daughters, we've lived there for the last 16 years. I want to be about providing for all the people of Virginia Beach. That's what's important to me, that everybody gets to be heard and everybody gets a fair share. We need to fix the flooding, and that's not 10 years from now or 15 years from now. We need to make sure that this pay compression is correct for our police, our fire and EMS, and we need to be pro-business for everybody, not just a special interest. Make it friendly for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bright?
It's hard to tell a talk for one minute. I'm Linda Bright, running for city council at large. I'm a country bureau for North Carolina, but I've been here 40-some years. This city is important to me. The leadership onboard is extremely important to me. Collaboration and communication, I want to listen to the citizens, what their needs are and what their concerns are. I am here at any time for you to call, and I want to hear it. And I'm running at large, here in the city of Virginia Beach, and I'm honestly, please, 30 seconds left. Thank you so much, I'm honored to be here, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hubbard?
Thank you, Chris. My name is Gary Hubbard, I'm running for city council at large. I'm a commercial and residential construction contractor. I understand about square foot cost, I understand building, I understand what it takes to bring business to our city in Virginia Beach. I know our city is a diverse and large population, I want to represent the disabled, disenfranchised, and this hard, I want to represent the hard-working men and women trying to make ends meet on the state of the place that cannot take any more tax increases and cannot take any more fees. This is something that I know, I know how to do it. I understand the flooding issues, you can't blow smoke up somebody that's been there and done that in the field. I thank you for your time, I look for your vote, my name is Gary Hubbard.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moss?
Good evening, I'm John Moss, you're at large council member. It is an honor and a privilege to have served you as your employee. I understand that council member is a fancy word for employee. I think my role is to be a firewall between your personal standard of living and the insatiable appetite that governs for spending. I believe in setting priorities, I believe in holding down on spending, holding down on debt, and speaking for the public...
On the merits, making decisions on reason. I do ask on number six, if you vote for John Moss, an individual who's committed to being loyal to their oath and loyal to the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. White, excuse me, Ms. Oliver?
Hi, good evening, I'm Dee Oliver, and I'm running for city council so that I can work for you and work with you. I'm the vice chair of the planning commission. I graduated from Virginia Wesley in college with an education major. I'm a small business owner, and I'm married to a small business owner. And I'm the fourth generation of my family to live here in Virginia Beach, and I'm raising the fifth. I love this city, and I love doing things for you. It is important for me, as the generations go forward, to provide them with good jobs and ways to make a living. I want to take our city into the future, and I want to create good quality of life, not just for the future children, but for us right now. I'm a small business owner and a mother and a citizen just like you, and I want the exact same things that you want. Traffic, flooding, good schools, good public safety, good economic vitality. Thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Good evening. Yeah, I'm Eric Rouse, I'm running for Virginia City Council at large race. I want to thank Donna Howard, Abby Higginson, as well as Virginia City Board, and also like the elected officials out in the house tonight, as well as all the candidates who are running tonight, and participating in this process. Here's why I'm running. I'm passionate about our city, I'm from here. When it comes to flooding and infrastructure, it is a priority. We need to make sure that we actively go out there and secure funding, whether that be state or federal, secure funding for our cities, for our city, to go out there and make sure we secure those funding. When it comes to the business community, I want to make sure that the process is fair, is transparent, and is balanced. Also, when it comes to our first responder, we got to take care of our teachers, we got to take care of our police officers, and we got to take care of our backbone with our committee of citizens. I want to make sure we are physically responsible, draw our earned dollars, and make sure Virginia Beach lives up to its potential.
Thank you very much. Ms. White?
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here. I'd like to thank the Virginia Beach City Board for hosting this event. My name is Allison White, I'm running in city council at large district. I'm from this area, I grew up in the Great Bank area, graduated from Cox High School. Currently, I am a public high school teacher at Kingsport High School in Suffolk. I am running for city council, my main purpose or main reason for running is to make sure that the interests of our public schools are fully represented at the city council level. Funding for our schools accounts for nearly half of the budget, yet there are no teachers on city council. As a teacher, I bring that expertise and experience to city council. City of Virginia Beach invests a lot of money in education, and I think it would be really important to have a member of city council who really knows what's going on at the K-12 level. A vote for me in November is a vote for our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that concludes the opening statement. We're not going to give any questions and answers. I want to thank you, by the way, I didn't even have to remind you not to clap every time. Thank you very much. Okay, let's start with the questions. One minute, one minute to answer the questions. We'll start with Mr. Burton. "We have a backlog for dredging canals, lakes, and ditches. When is your plan to get this done sooner than later?"
Well, let's stop giving developers subsidies to build development here in Virginia Beach, particularly at the ocean park. We can reallocate some of those funds and put them back into spending that will actually help more the community. My father-in-law lives off Dahlia, which is in the Green Rock community, and when it rains, just maybe for an hour or so, that whole community floods. I'm a real estate seller dating as well, so I help people move into houses in Winterwood, and this is right after Hurricane Matthew came. And the main reason that people were deterred from moving over there is because one side of the area floods, while the other side is clear. You know, we shouldn't be thinking what is the news, as you hear from many of the candidates. We need to make it where we can make it a priority, so as we can allocate funds by shifting money away, maybe not taxing ourselves as much as, as much as we have then, and put it to, I'm sorry, removing special interest from quages and allowing us to put money and funds to the dredging, which is very important.
Thank you very much. I'm going to change that question a little bit to Councilman Henley. Ms. Henley, you are a councilman. "We have a backlog for dredging canals, lakes, and ditches. Why hasn't been done up to this point?"
Well, I think if we were to look at the number of miles of ditches and canals, we find that there's quite a lot to do, and we have been doing these things, and this does occur, and we have a priority. We have all of these areas zoned, and we have a different zone that's addressed each year. So it is occurring. But we have to continue to look at the changes and the priorities. There's two kinds of water that we have to deal with. There's the rainwater, stormwater, and then there's sea level rise, that's the ocean. And when we start addressing that issue, particularly this fall, when we get the Newberry report, we're going to find that we have an awful lot of re-prioritizing to do, and that's what we hope, we can have participation of all of you to help us as we address that.
Thank you very much. Let me have that microphone, because since there's another councilman here, I'd like to ask Mr. Moss that same question.
Well, we had an opportunity in May of 2017 to adopt the budget that Councilwoman Abbott and myself recommended, that would have reduced and eliminated the 12-year backlog in six years, would have provided the funding to accelerate many of those projects in not 15 years, but probably in six to eight, eight at the most, but the choice instead was to use those tax dollars that we didn't use for light rail, and we didn't do it, rather than using those funding sources for flooding, they were used for other special interest projects. So we had a choice, and council majority chose not to make that choice, and flooding was made a lower priority.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moss. Ms. Quansey, if you would like it.
I'll tell you what, dredging and clearing are going to be expensive, and my humble opinion is going to take a united will to address them, and it'll have to be a robust, active plan where we all take our part, and certainly can't mean dividing communities against each other, to get the attention of council members in order to get things done. So we're going to all have to come together to make it happen, and I think, you know, Mr. Moss mentioned that there are other alternatives, and they will have to be things that a new council considers in order to take action. So dredging and clearing are just a first step, we're going to have to combine that with a regional resiliency plan that is robust in nature, and again, requires a united will of the residents to make it happen. Thank you.
I'm going to run over to get this, I want Mr. Rouse to answer that same question, then we're going to move on.
Thank you. Well, here we have a city, we have a region, flooding is not unique to our city of Virginia Beach. We are called tile water for reasons. It's all in terms of reasonable approach to secure funding at the state and federal level down here, and that way, it will alleviate the tax burden. We don't have to raise the taxes here in our city. We need to understand that we are a region, we're a team Hampton Roads, we face the same issues, but Virginia Beach needs to be a quarterback of that team. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me start with Ms. White, we stay basically in the same arena, but I want to ask you this, should we build a new city hall, or should we wait 15 years by taking care of flooding?
For me, I believe the purpose of monitoring purposes of city council is to provide services to its citizens, services that you pay for with your taxes. So to answer your question, I would prioritize mitigating the effects of flooding over building a city council, I'm not, or I'm sorry, a city hall. I'm not against building a city hall per se, but at this point, it's about prioritizing the resources, allocating resources in a manner that, in my opinion, helps the citizens more. So yeah, city hall probably is something we need to do down the line, but right now, the priority should be the residents and working on mitigating the effects of flooding for a lot of our citizens in the city.
Thank you very much. Keeping on track of prioritizing, Ms. Oliver, would you vote to prioritize flooding in the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan?
I think it's extremely important to take care of flooding at this moment. It's a huge priority. I just addressed an issue with two houses that were built in Central Beach, and I have some pictures of them on the phone, I got an email from a woman about them questioning their locality to the wetlands. I definitely would want to start building those CIPs for flooding, and I know the city has done some of it, but I think that we've got a lot further to go with that. Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hubbard, back to city hall, should we build a new city hall, or should we wait to take care of flooding first?
Well, it's wants and needs, you know, the very idea with flooding, and let's face facts, if we don't take that first step, all the talk in the world is not going to stop one bucket full of water. So we've got to take that first step, whether it's cleaning out the ditches and holding pots, taking side elevations for drains, and whatever. But back to your idea about building the city hall, I don't see the plans and specifications for the square foot cost. You know, we've got to actually start looking at, actually spending the city's statute money the same way. You know, Clonely Williamsburg is up in Williamsburg. If you want to build a building that is, like a Taj Mahal, we got to actually look at the same deals right there. No, I would put that on hold, and I'd put the sports ring on hold too. 30, 46, you made it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hubbard. I wanted everybody to know, because it's not mine idea to build a new city hall. Just a minute. Okay. Ms. Bright, should we build a new city hall, or should we wait until we address the flooding issue?
We absolutely must address the flooding issue. One of the things that concern me is that looking at whether it's employees or whether contractors that are doing the flooding, you know, getting this straightened out, because I think that we could look at the prime contractors that we're hiring to do this work, and see if we get the best rates for that, to do the deflood, to help out with that. In terms of the city hall, I think at this time, that's not a priority.
Thank you very much. Mr. Worst?
I'm sitting off on the city hall. There is no way that I would build a new city hall at this time. We just mentioned that we're 12 years behind on dredging ditches. Why should we allow there to be a new city hall built to cost $50 million? Our teachers can teach in trailers, my daughter can learn in a trailer, but yeah, we need to build a $50 million city hall for those folks. I think we need to put our teachers first, our kids first, and all these residents. We need to start cleaning out these ditches and solving this flooding problem way before we build a city hall.
Thank you, Mr. Worst. Mr. Quansey, Ms. Quansey, would you vote to prioritize flooding in the CIP?
Of course I would. When I married my husband, I said to him I could live in a shack with him, and frankly, I think we can do city business in modules like Mr. Worst said, I don't think that would be a problem. I think, you know, our students do, go to school in modules, I teach in a module, and I think that city government can be done anywhere, and we should be willing to do that in a place other than Taj Mahal. We don't need something like that, we need flooding taken care of, we need dredging and clearing addressed immediately, we need a regional resiliency plan coming to undergird that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Henley, got a question for you. "Before Hurricane Matthew, neighborhoods like Aragona had been flooding for years. Where has a billion dollar in stormwater fees gone?"
Actually, our city auditor did a complete audit last year of all of the stormwater money that we had collected over the years, and where it was gone, and found that it was all fully accounted for. I hope that you all will watch these presentations on the issues as we had them last week with the meteorologist and the hydrologist, talking about what happened at Matthew. When we look at Matthew, we see a particular situation that occurred, that we have prioritized our stormwater based on that one storm. Unfortunately, if we were to have another storm that came in from another direction, other neighborhoods would have been heavily addressed with that storm. We need to re-prioritize according to all of the city, and not just look at those neighborhoods that were particularly impacted with Matthew. I think we have to re-prioritize, we have to do it every year.
Ms. Henley, with all due respect, again, to answer the question, my question was, where did the money go if things are cannot be accounted for? Where did it go?
It went to resolve stormwater issues, not only capital projects, but also maintenance. You know, we have two parts of the budget, we have capital projects and we have maintenance, and the stormwater fee goes for both of those issues. Not only just digging our ditches, but also constructing the new structures that are necessary. All of it was accounted for being spent for stormwater issues.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moss, may I ask you the exact same question as your question?
Well, there are about four major components of that billion dollars over time. That tax was adopted in 1993, I didn't vote for it then, wouldn't vote for it now, it's a long way to finance that bill. But nonetheless, labor cost, that's close to half of that money is going to labor who do various functions in the stormwater management to be his labor cost. Then you have interest on bonds that have already been issued for certain water quality and certain drainage projects, that's interest. Then you have the actual projects or pay-go projects that the city does at its own labor, and then you have the contracted effort. So it doesn't take long to spend, well, it wasn't $40 million a year in 1993, but it doesn't take long, what, after the cost of labor, to burn through a billion dollars since 1993, that's quite a few years if you think about it, but that's where the money goes. What the auditor did was, is said, all the money was spent for the appropriation was done, he made no value judgment as to whether or not the money was well spent.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Mr. Burton, are you aware of any promises made by the city to harvest farms developers to allow increased development in exchange for a robust stormwater management plan? But you can get me back there now, can't you? Okay, the question again, are you aware of any promises made by the city to harvest farm developers to allow increased development in exchange for a robust stormwater management plan?
I am not personally aware of the developer's secret. I mean, we know we have a problem here with developers and with people who may sit on council. And the reason is, is that they've been, we have a good old boys' network, you know, they've allowed, you know, special interest to get involved every single time. So I'm not really sure as far as like, how many people, what kind of issues they have, that any backyard, any back deals, other than speculation. So basically, I'm really going to answer that question 100%.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. How about Ms. Quansey?
I'm not aware of any deals, but I was at both of the public meetings that the developer held out in Prince of San District in the last couple of weeks, and I can tell you that one of the things that was said to community members was that there were discussions with city officials, that was the term used, that had suggested to the developer that that kind of stormwater management in exchange for density was amenable, and I can tell you that the public was not excited to learn that. And it was another, in my view, piece of evidence to advocate for transparency, a better public process. I'm glad to see that so many people came out for that meeting and heard that developer make that comment, and were able to convey back that that was not the way they wanted business done, they wanted their viewpoints to be taken into consideration, and they wanted to be heard and respected. And that's why I'm running for council, because I asked that developer to come out there and have that meeting, I urged them to do that a year ago. When they came out and had that meeting, they were surprised at the public input that was available to them to let them know that they thought about that project. That's the way it should happen.
Thank you very much. Mr. Worst, do you support the ARP? Why or why not?
Not to be tricky, but I'm going to go fluctuate here just a little bit. The ARP is a great program for those farmers out there who are trying to farm and do their life. So it's great for that person that has 10 acres or more to have the ARP program to help them as a farmer, to keep them going and to keep their lifestyle going. What the ARP is not good for, those folks that take advantage of it and go and buy that land and then make money again, selling the land and let somebody else farm it. That's not what it's intended for. So I appreciate and love the fact that we have the ARP for those farmers, that helps them. I do not like the idea that we can allow people to buy land and then sell it off again and then collect that money. There are people out there having a hundred and some odd thousand dollars a year given to them from the taxpayer. Also, with the ARP, that money that was given to the light rail a few years ago, when they were asked to give that ARP money to the flooding, they said no.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bright, same question?
Absolutely. First of all, I'm a farmer from years back. I wish there was some money back during those days that we could use. But I can say this to you, certainly I would not agree with that, and I think there needs to be a monitoring system set up. When those grants are given up, someone need to take a check, and they have to, they should sign some type of contract given them 15 to 20 years before they can sell that land.
Mr. Hubbard, different question. Are you in favor of private-public partnerships?
Well, as a contractor though, you know, each business deal, each development, each contract, each construction contractor, each deal must stand on its own merit. I know you all are tired of subsidizing wealthy developers, and as far as this project in Pundol, it is very expensive to drain land to get it to where you can actually build on it. So as far as the harvest farm, if they don't put in so many houses for density, then they're not going to turn a profit. So yes, they're going to try to get as much density as possible, so we need to make sane construction projects, instill it in wealthy developers, and actually subsidizing these people.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard. Ms. Oliver, same question?
Yeah, public-private partnership?
You're in favor of private-public partnerships?
I think they need to be looked at. Some of them are good, some not so good. They need to be transparent and each project should be judged individually as it comes forth. They need to generate the revenue to offset the public investment. And they need to benefit the public when it happens.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rouse, are you in favor of the ITA, the Comprehensive Plan, the InterFacility Traffic Area?
Well, I think, you know, going on our city, to be the city we need to be in Virginia Beach, we have to look at a really adequate transportation plan. We need to look at ways to have mass transit under our city. And we want to continue to grow and be that the city we need. But also, I want to get back to this moral responsibility we need to have in our elected officials, especially when it comes to public-private partnerships as well. What is happening in the past, and I understand, I get it, I see it. People have abused the system. And now, any time someone mentions the public-private partnership or mass transit situation, we can't take anymore. It leaves a bad taste in our mouth. So we need to elect people with moral values and principles that can stand up to the developers so they don't have an issue to our benefit.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse. Ms. White?
Transportation issues in our city are really important. Obviously, we have a lot of congestion. And in terms of transportation, mass transit solutions are something we need to look at. We had the light rail. I don't think light rail, at least what we had before, is not appropriate for our type of sprawling suburban environment. But we should always look at different mass transit solutions. I would be open to anything that would be on the table that would benefit our citizens, but at a reasonable cost. And just going very quickly to the public-private issue a couple of candidates ago, I think public-private partnerships are okay, just as long as the public is not getting all the risk and the private's getting all the reward. So you would look at the return on investment. If we're going to invest in public-private relationships, make sure the detriments and benefits are more equally distributed.
Thank you very much. This is a yes or no question, just yes or no, straight up. Are you in favor of reducing the size and scope of government? Mr. Burton?
Yes.
Ms. Henley?
Possible question to answer.
Well, it's just a yes or no answer, yes or no?
To reduce the size of government?
Are you in favor of reducing the size and scope of government? Yes or no?
I'm not in favor of big government.
So that means no. Okay, Ms. Quansey?
Yes.
Yes, sir. No, the big government.
Say, reducing the size?
Yes, we have big government.
Yes, we need to reduce the size.
Yes.
Great. Okay. Let's switch gears here. We're gonna go a little bit to taxes and fees. And we'll start with Ms. White. Not only does city council keep the light rail taxes they raised, taxes and fees as well. Shouldn't city council budget like we, the citizens, have to do?
Of course. Of course, the city should budget like we do. In terms of taxes, taxes, like I said before, taxes should be used for residential services. That's what you're paying for, services, you pay the taxes. So yes, of course, we should budget. Sometimes there's such things as good debt. If you're having debt with capital improvement projects that bring a benefit to the city and will repay, you know, have a return on investment in time, that's fine. If you use debt in a positive way, I buy my house, I have a mortgage, but that's positive debt. So I'm using debt to have a house to live in. We can find positive ways to use debt. But in general, yes, we should definitely budget accordingly within our needs.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rouse, same question?
Yes, I think we should have a budget in our city, in our council. We should be on the budget because we take your hard-earned dollars and we're supposed to put your hard-earned dollars to use for you, the residents. And that hasn't happened in the past. So yes, we need to be on the budget as well. But also, we need to make sure we serve our communities. The last time, when a huge snowstorm came in here, we barely had, our first responders barely had the tools they needed to come out and rescue us, our citizens stuck in the house. When it came time to flooding, we have a backlog of flooding. Those are tax dollars that we could have put to good use. And when it came to raising those tax dollars for light rail use, as you all know, once they raise taxes, they're not gonna try to decrease taxes. I really believe if we're not gonna, once we raise those monies for light rail, we should not give them those taxes back to you. We should have decreased those taxes that they're raising.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse. This is a question that you have to kind of keep up with. My water bill was $83.20. This is for you, Ms. Oliver. The water cost was $3.30. Hey, I'm, don't shoot the messenger. The rest of the bill was fees and utility taxes for services that used to be covered by real estate taxes. Do you have a plan to use this tax for expected services, not entertainment? Okay, I told you this is one of those questions. My water bill was $83.20. The water cost was $3.30. The rest of the bill was fees and utility taxes for services that used to be covered by real estate taxes. Do you have a plan to use this tax for expected services, not entertainment?
Well, I got a plan. But as a small business owner, if I ran my business like that, I'd be out of business. You can't do that. You just can't. It doesn't work that way. The money that you charge the citizens of Virginia Beach or the money that I put into my business, the profit I make, I put back into my business. I have to pay my employees. I have to create a living for them. I expect the city to do the exact same thing. We're responsible for your money. We're responsible to keep it where it's supposed to be unless an emergency arises that we need to take care of, such as flooding. But for the most part, we should be budgeting.
Is there a doctor in the house?
It's on, everything's under control. We'll continue with our forum. Mr. Moss, I hate to even ask you this question. She did ask the question. Do I need to repeat it? Okay. My water bill?
First, I want people to know, while we can talk about the water bill, the city council has never moved money out of those trustee accounts to some other purpose. That's important for people to know. What's important for people to know is that, yes, I didn't vote for those, we did increase the garbage pack fee and didn't offset and reduce the real estate tax, but one time. That's the one vote that Senator, all the stuff that I voted on, we reduced it two pennies when we increased the trash rate. So that is true. The trash is what it costs. And we only are passing the cost that we are charged by the people when we dump it, the cost to pick it up, and prorating that over the number of uses, which is about 140,000 uses. We have made a choice, I guess a conscious choice, to charge sewer on a daily rate versus on the volume use. Either way, someone loses. Do families pay more or you average out the cost? But the bottom line is, we collect the same amount of money because we have to pay the cost of the cost. The one thing we can't control is labor cost, but the money is not diverted.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Mr. Hubbard, which taxes, if you are elected, which taxes and/or fees are you committed to eliminate or decrease?
Well, first, property taxes need to actually be a sane tax. The fees for the trash pickup, let's have a little transparency in government. We need to know the true cost, whether it's water, whether it's trash pickup, whether it's property tax. We need to know the actual transparency. We need to know the cost. Do you wonder why now you have to pay monthly for water instead of every two months? Take a wild guess. Would it, could it, should it? The idea that we have to reduce taxes if we're gonna make the city a viable city to attract businesses.
Thank you very much. Ms. Wright, which taxes and/or fees are you committed to eliminate or decrease?
I'm agreeing with this gentleman here. Certainly, we need to lower the taxes on our properties. We need to look at it really clear. And those numbers need to be available to our citizens where they can find that at. The other thing, Ms. Oliver mentioned something that I want to bring back up. The snow last year and how bad it was. By the way, the city gave a contract to someone. They did a poor job. And I'd like to see that contract revisited and taken away because they did a very poor job. Other thing, real quick, oh, Lord, real quick, is that senior citizens who now, with that $10 extra on the waste management, I'd like to see senior citizens who meet the formula for that to be taken away. That $10 a month, please eliminate that because we already have a formula for it with the real estate tax on it in the city.
This one I'm gonna let you four talk about. Mr. Worce, you can start off. If tourism keeps our taxes low, how come you raise them every year?
That is a million-dollar question. Actually, it's a several-million-dollar question. And I have to tell you, I was looking in the audience earlier when they asked the same question to the earlier group. I hear it all the time that they're keeping your taxes lower. That all this tourism is keeping your taxes lower. I love our city. I'm glad we have these tourists that come in here and enjoy the heck out of themselves. But I've yet to see somebody show me how they're keeping our taxes lower.
I think your question actually wasn't to any of us because we haven't done that, any of us that are actually running for council this time. So the question is for current council members as to why they continue to increase our taxes despite the fact that tourism is supposed to be the primary economic driver, correct?
Having said that, running for office, you should perhaps have investigated why.
Right, okay. So you're asking me why as though I'm hypothetically the city council member. I wish I had an answer to that question. I don't know why the taxes keep going up if tourism is supposed to be the primary economic driver and we're told it's what brings in the revenue. I do think that we have to diversify that revenue stream if we want that to continue to happen. And we haven't yet done that. We haven't tackled the question as to how we're going to diversify ourselves away from military dependency and continue to drive that tourism dollar, reconnect our tourism and agricultural industry so that we have a variety of revenue streams. We're not relying on one that isn't always obviously reliable. And then we might not have to do that again and again.
Thank you. Ms. Henley?
Well, I think when we talk about not raising taxes, we often are saying the tax rate. And we have managed to keep the tax rate in real estate at the same level for a while. And I think it's important that we keep our real estate tax rate as low as possible. But a few years ago during the Great Recession, when the value of people's houses went down, folks weren't too happy with that either. So if we have this tax increase on real estate in these years when we leave the rate the same, it simply means your property is increasing in value. And I think we like that a lot better than we like losing it. If we did not have the tourist industry, we would be raising, that accounts for something like $5 million a year for each penny. And I think they generated about $60 million a year to us so you figure how many cents on the real estate tax that's worth.
See, that's one thing. You were talking about a real estate percentage tax. If you call it a fee and you raise the fees, you're still ultimately raising the taxes. So I'm kind of stoked at the question. If tourism keeps our taxes low, i.e. taxes and fees, why do we keep raising them every year?
Well, like you said, our local state tax in Virginia Beach is actually historically lower than the seven other cities that we actually have. But the taxes that are actually being raised are mostly our food and breakfast or retail tax. We have our beef oil tax. I'm not sure how many people are small business owners in here. But if I'm elected as council, I'm eliminated out of day one. Let's try to get some people together so we can get rid of that tax because there is no reason we should be paying on the taxes of income that you haven't even known if you're gonna have yet and on your assets. So it just makes no sense. At least some kind of forward thinking, some progress here in Virginia Beach as far as our taxes. Just to jump on some other things, should we budget? I think we should budget just like we budget at home. We all got our ledger. We go, we say this time that we bought in, this time that we go out. So as council member, I'll make sure we do the same due diligence as well.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. This goes to Mr. Moss. What are your plans for addressing the city debt?
This is really a good question. The city's debt load is 10% of its income, which is not a high percentage. Many of us would like our debt service and cost to be 10% of our income, wouldn't we? So I think the real issue is the city should be borrowing less because our job is to, what, ensure your prosperity, not the city. So we should be borrowing less. But more importantly, it's what we're issuing the debt for. Should we be spending $68 million in our borrowing capacity for sports center, independent of where the money comes from, or using our credit limit for flooding? So the challenge isn't about how much the debt is because if really 10% isn't outrageous, it shouldn't be more than that, but that's our policy limit. But it's what we use the debt for. That's what we're not managing very well. Our priorities are wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Mr. Rouse?
Well, I believe that, you know, we have to bring more balance to our city. I think in order to utilize our debt, that our priorities do have to be in place. I almost view it as a vehicle, you know? The citizens of Virginia Beach, you are the engine of that vehicle. And you need tires, strong tires, again, to take that and go on the road and go somewhere. That is the debt. You have to make sure that those tires are on there and you have to make sure that we can actually have good debt to where we can actually get where we need to go. That means having the potential to be the city that we need to be. Also, I think that we have to budget. We have to budget smartly and be fiscal responsible with your hard-earned tax dollars. Again, there makes no sense to me that we are not prioritizing flooding and seal rising infrastructure in our city. We need to make sure that is a priority. And if we handle debt, that's where the smart debt should go.
This is an important question that affects the real opportunity for folks like us to run for office in Virginia Beach. So the question is, would you vote to put district voting on the ballot? Why or why not?
Yes, I would vote to put district voting on the ballot. We have 11 members of the city council right now. We have seven districts. I think if you have the districts, you only can vote in the district for that candidate. That candidate will be more responsive to the needs of that area. And every area in Virginia Beach has unique concerns. Yes, so I would put it on the ballot and let the people decide if that's what they would want.
Thank you very much. Ms. Oliver, residents defeated light rail in a referendum. Would you bring it back?
No.
Thank you for that timely and informed answer. Ms. Hubbard?
No, light rail is actually a missed normer. We need mass transportation. We actually have people that work for us that can spend two hours coming to work and two hours going back home. So we need to actually have real sane mass transportation. We need to increase our buses. We need to increase our bus load. This needs to be funded. As far as a budget, the city has no budget. The city has a vision of what our money is. So on that end of it, as far as debt for the city, it's not the city's debt. It's everybody's in here's debt. This debt is yours. You have to pay that, whether it's vertical bake compression or whether it's the debt the city has incurred so far.
Ms. Wright, I'm gonna ask you a different question, but you're not saying, do you think the city manager should be fired?
I was quite concerned when I heard what happened. So, and also listened to our mayor, Jones', response. Certainly was something he should not have done, if that is true. I think that in a regular business, we certainly put people on suspension or monitor them. But definitely, I think that if this occurs again, bye-bye. But definitely, I think that if this occurs again, bye-bye. There's no doubt about it.
Mr. Wurst?
Yes, sir, I would. I would have fired him a few months ago, and it wouldn't have been me when I say I would have fired him. It would have been a vote between council, and that would have been those council members coming together and trying to get that majority. It comes up to the council, and that's their decision. I would have voted in favor of terminating him. The last two big companies I've worked for were GEICO and USAA. You would never, ever get away with his actions at GEICO or at USAA. You would have been giving a talking to. You would have been given a written warning. You would have been giving a coming to Jesus moment. That should fix it, and then you'd get terminated. So I would terminate him.
From what I've heard, he's a pretty smart guy, and so I don't think that his actions were very smart. As the largest city in Virginia, I'd say we need someone who's a little more professional in their communications, and I suspect that needs to be the way he's handled at the moment, and I hope he'll be more careful in the future. I think Mr. Wurst just said that in general in businesses, when someone makes a grievous mistake like that, they're given a one, two, three strikes and you're out. And so let's, in my view, give him an opportunity to rectify his actions, maybe learn a bit from them and move forward. If he continues along the same lines, then we make a different decision.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hamel, different question. Should rerouting Atlantic Avenue be put on a ballot referendum?
I really don't think that's the kind of issue that we use in a referendum. Those are pretty well reserved for issues such as capital projects, such as we have had with some kinds of road referendums and school referendums. This is an issue that I think needs to be addressed, particularly with the community in that area, the neighbors who live there, and I think that's the way we've been addressing it.
Thank you, Ms. Bright. Same question. Should rerouting Atlantic Avenue be put on a ballot referendum?
I think that because of the district that's in, it should be because everyone has a voice. Everybody has an opinion. And I believe that if you allow the voice of people to speak, then you can actually go off and add them or kind of process. But if you silence them, then you're going to slight some people. I believe that everybody's voice is actually is important. So I would put it up there. I don't agree with it 100%, but I would put it up there.
Thank you, Mr. Burden. This is the last question. It's going to be a yes or no question. I'm going to start with Mr. Burden. Just go pass the microphone right on down. Do you believe in term limits?
Absolutely, yes, I do. I understand that my co-host's been here for a very long time. She's served the community with great admonition. Unfortunately, what happens is that when you get into a seated position for a very lengthy time, you do lose track of the constituents that you actually serve. You do lose some focus. You got to stay innovative. You got to stay progressive, and you do lose. Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, yes.
Yes, sir. Two-term limit and then move on.
Yes. You need two terms. If you're going to do a project, you need enough time to see it through and make sure it's valid. So I would, a two-term limit.
No, I need an election.
Yes, as a planning commissioner, on the planning commissioner, we get two terms, and then we have to rotate off. So I think sometimes that's a good thing.
Yes, we need two-term limits, and I'll tell you why. The new generation of leadership.
Mr. Burden and Mr. Rouse, I have to hold this tight.
Yes, two-term limits would be acceptable.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the question and answer period. We're now going to do the one-minute closing statements, and we are going to start with Ms. White.
All right, my name is Allison White, and I'm running in the at-large district. As I said before, I'm running to make sure that the interests of the public schools are being fully, fully recognized at the city council level, fully represented. I've noticed, you know, the candidates and the council members, we all generally agree on a lot of things. We're pro schools. We want to mitigate the effects of flooding. We don't want to raise taxes, and we don't want to increase our debt or anything like that. So everybody brings specialized knowledge and a different set of experiences to the table. For me, it's education. I believe as a public high school teacher, I have that specialization. It's our greatest venture in this city. So as a teacher, I think it's important to have someone with this background. If you're looking for someone with a different perspective, different outlook, and different set of experiences to bring to the city council, then vote for me, Allison White, on number six.
Thank you very much, Ms. White.
Thank you. I'm grateful to be here tonight. Just want to thank team partner, Ms. Allison, for having me here tonight as well. I think all the candidates are in the house tonight. You know, I'm grateful for this process, that we can all come together and get a chance to know who we are and what we stand on and our values. I'm reminded by a quote from JFK, and I dare not misquote him, so I'm just going to read off this. "Let us not seek the Republican answer or the Democratic answer, but let us seek the right answer. Let us not seek to fix the blame for the past. Let us accept our own responsibility for our future, our future." And that's listening to your voice, making sure you're like council members whose morals, values, and principles aren't placed, and make sure we serve you and that we never forget that. That's why I support two-term limits to inspire a new generation of leadership that's more innovative and has a broader vision. I'm Aaron Rouse. I'm running the at-large race. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Oliver?
Well, I feel very short between these two tall and empty seats. And I just want to thank you all for having me. It's been a pleasure to be here, to meet a lot of you, and it's been a pleasure to serve you as the planning commissioner that I have been for five years now. I've seen a lot in this city, fourth generation, raising the fifth, small business owner, educator. And I just want you to know, like you all, I'm a citizen, and I care about every single thing that you do. I want to work for you. I want to work with you, and I want to lead you into a brighter and a better city with great quality of life for our children and our grandchildren to thrive and grow here. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Mr. Moss?
Well, I am John Moss. I want to at-large, I do request your vote. I told you four years ago that I would be a vote of reason and your vote and your voice on city council. I believe I have fulfilled that promise. I've always believed that the founders were right. The purpose of government is to preserve our liberty, not to deliver services. The purpose of government isn't to take so much that we have no money left to exercise liberties that we have. I've always approached the job that the city's budget should be leaner than your home budget, and we should have the same kind of cars you have at home. You don't build a pool when your roof leaks. You shouldn't be building a sports center or city hall when people's homes are flooding. That's the simple judgment I bring. I'm here to serve you and listen to you, and I have done that. I appreciate your vote on number six. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hubbard?
Yes, my name is Gary Hubbard, and I'm a native vet, and I'm a small businessman. I've created many jobs here in the city of Virginia Beach. I married my wife in 1973. Here I moved when I got out of circus. My brother lives here. I offer solutions. I don't offer talk and rhetoric. That will not get it done. I understand square flip cost. I understand curves and curves. I know what elevations is. I actually control the level. You can't stop flooding, but you can mitigate it, control it. You've got to take that first step. I look forward to representing the city of Virginia Beach. It's a large, diverse city. I want to represent all the city, not just Pacific and Atlantic Avenue, but wealthy developers and the hotel, motel owners can take care of theirself. As far as the hotel tax money, they kept that, and they're not giving it up. I thank you. I look forward for your vote. I'm on Facebook. My name is Gary Hubbard, and thank you for your turn.
Thank you, Ms. Bright.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. I'm very honored, and I thank you that, first of all, I'm running for city council at large. My biggest concern to the budget and its transparency, taking care of our veterans and the homeless population. I didn't hear a lot about our releaseees from jail. I work very hard with them, working on, you know, work with concerns for our children. All-day kindergarten is important, and reduce lunches or free lunches for individuals that come from homes who can't afford that. The kids are important to us. We got to protect them and safety. Transportation, I think we can come with a plan to address that. I'm Lynda Bright. I'm running for city council at large, and I thank you so much because you guys are the ones that's most important here tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Wurst?
Amen to that. My name is Tim Wurst. I'm running for the Princess Anne District. I am so thankful that all of you are here tonight. It's a big crowd. Honored to stand in front of you and ask you to vote for me to be on your city council. Just an Arrowhead Elementary kid that keptsville, go to college in South Carolina, then come back and raise two daughters and have my wife here with me. I want to make sure that we fix flooding now and not 10, 15 years from now. For three or four days last week, you can ask my wife, I was out in Punggol riding around in my truck or somebody else's truck, looking at that water and talking to folks out there. I've talked to police officers over and over and over, have done ride-logs, that we need to fix that paint compression and make sure we take care of those officers. And everybody knows, we need a friendly, open-for-business sign in Virginia Beach and not just those special interest folks. Thank you very much for your attention tonight. My name's Tim Wurst, and I'm running for the city council in Princess Anne District.
Thank you.
I'm Kieran Quasini. I'm running for the Princess Anne District seat on city council. I've been involved in my communities since 2011, and I stay involved because I genuinely care. I am just like the rest of you. This is the hardest thing I have ever done, but I can tell you that while I respect the incumbents' long years of service and I respect my opponents' passions, I bring a combination to the table that isn't present when you choose one of them and you choose me instead. A fresh perspective. I'm already engaged. I'm experienced. I know my community. I'm interested in the rest of the city, and I have a knowledge of what the rest of the city wants for itself, having already been out there talking to so many members of the public throughout this campaign season and in the long eight years I've worked for my community. I hope that you will elect me this year and give me the opportunity to continue to do what I feel is one of the most important things I've done, and that's serve all of you as a volunteer in these past seven years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hamel?
I'm Barbara Henley, and I do represent the Princess Anne District, and it's been a very humbling experience to serve on the city council, and I appreciate the opportunity I've had, first to serve as the Punggol District Representative and then later as the Princess Anne District Representative. For the entire time that I have been on the council, I have been a grassroots person. I got my start in grassroots campaigns, and I'm still a grassroots councilperson. I am not having my campaign funded by any single interest group, just citizens. I've always felt that the important thing is to keep your neighborhoods, your neighborhoods safe, places to learn and to live and to work and not be commercial areas. Keeping our neighborhoods residential is a very important part of my campaign. I really appreciate the opportunity to have served you and hope that I can continue.
Mr. Burden, I'm going to hold this one here.
Now I'm going to walk around. Look, I'm a preacher, and I've been speechless up here. I was, I mean, the nervousness of being a servant, you know, to stand before people that you only get a couple minutes to be able to say what you can say. So I can never get enough out for you guys to really know exactly who I am. Once again, my name is Pyri Burton. I'm running for Princess Anne District. I invite each and every one of you guys out. We're having our campaign release party and a block party in the Lake Embers community right in front of our church, 549 Newtown Road, from 12:00 to 4:00. I invite my opponents, our constituents, everyone. Why? Because it's important for everybody to know what we stand for. My job is to get and push the message out that we can do better for Virginia Beach. We need to have some forward-type thinking. We need some innovative thinking. I'm working on a proposal so we can get free Wi-Fi for low-income communities, especially the Lake Embers community. And this can all be done with little money, little monetary stuff. You know, the thing is, we got to have that on council. We got to get new jobs in. Everybody's talking about the hot topics now, flooding, drinking, this and that. That's true, but then what? What do we do after that? Let us be progressive, not regressive. Vote for Pi. Get your piece of the pie. This is no reference. Now I'm holding that, man.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's hear a big round of applause for our team today. Welcome to this floor. It's a very hot, humid day today. And by the way, thank you so much. You are the greatest audience in the world. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.